Good morning. It is Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. Our call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now is the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If you're in the public meeting room or would like to make public comment, please go to the come up front, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we'll close public comment number one. We'll move on to agency reports. The first that we have is Environmental Health Quarterly Report. And good morning, Laura.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sometimes something weird happens to my voice when I sit here. So pardon me if that happens.
The oxygen is lower in right there.
Thank you. I thought maybe that was it. Oh, so Kimberly is still out on medical leave. Is that really loud or is that just me?
It's no, it's good.
She'll be back next Monday, the 19th. Things have been going pretty well since. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things from her report. We have a new hotel preopening pool, preopening inspection coming up this week with the state engineer. Otherwise pools, indoor pools are underway and outdoor pools will start right after Memorial Day and then wrap up before the end of June. The annual pumping and land application sites have been completed and the reports submitted. And we reviewed a potential new land application site for approval by DNR. Then tattoo program. Story County has done boons are scheduled for the end of this month, so those will be done. We had a new shop open up in Ames. Matt went to the middle of the map tattoo convention and assisted dial with all the inspections there. And then he is going to be going to a convention in Kansas City with the state of Missouri to kind of shadow and help and see what improvements we can make to our program. So he's going to be doing that the end of this month. And we've been dealing with a lot of unregistered artists and primarily microblading. They just, and it's the ignorance that they don't realize they need multiple permits to be able to do that, that it is the kind of tattooing. So we've been just trying to work with, we had to serve papers to one individual, but we're really just trying to work with the community. There was a business uptown that was advertising mini tattoos for their one year business celebration. So Matt and I reached out to them and we're like, you mean temporary tattoos, right? And they're like, no, they're real. And we're like, oh. They're not, you don't have permits. So we kind of talked to her and reached out before it was, the event was scheduled. And then she was able to make some changes and ended not having tattoos. But if she wants to do again, she knows how to do that in the future. So we've been really busy with our tattoo program. The other exciting thing is we received $18,000 of reallocation for our private well grants. Story County has never been reallocated money before.
That's great.
So really excited about that. And that is the things that I kind of wanted to touch base with you. Did you have any, any questions for me?
The outdoor pool in Ames is opening on the 24th. So before Memorial Day, which I thought was kind of cool and interesting. But is that gonna?
We like them to be open for about a week or so before we do the inspections. We can make sure all the reports are getting filled out, that the chemicals are balanced and stuff. So, but that is good to know because pretty much everybody else is like Memorial Day.
I know. That's why I was like, oh, look at you getting ahead of the group.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Next, we have the primary healthcare. We have both their annual report and then their ARPA report. And I'm not sure if it's Nathan that's going to do that. I think you're unmuted, Nathan. I see Taylor's on as well, so whenever you switch back and forth is fine.
Morning. I believe we have one more possibly in attendance. Stephanie Balo from our team is planning to join us as well.
Oh, yep, I see her name there.
There we are. Well, thank you for having us. Good morning. Presented to all of you many times before, my name is Nathan Simpson. I'm the CEO for Primary Healthcare. With me this morning, I have Dr. Taylor Postler. She is our dental director and a practicing dentist up at our Ames Clinic. And then Stephanie Balo, who is our Chief Administrative Officer. So to present on really just our annual report first. So our Ames Dental Clinic has grown, the total number of dental visits, which has been the case since its inception. So since prior year, fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24, we experienced about a 15% increase in visit volume. And we anticipate ending fiscal year 25 slightly higher than fiscal year 24, but not, not quite as significant of an increase in capacity. Really been essentially meeting our capacity since fiscal year 24. In the report that I shared with all of the supervisors, you'll notice that there is just some decrease in some of the statistics that we shared from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24. I just want to call out that that is really due to the way that we started reporting our data in fiscal year 24 and the Clear Impact Scorecard. So we clarified that it would be more advantageous for us to report on Story County residents only in that scorecard. So we started doing that. So unfortunately, we can't go back and extract that data because we switched electronic medical records or electronic dental records in the past year and a half or so. So we could do that going forward. We can't go back and extract that data in the past. But I just want to reassure you all that when we submit requests for payment, we are only submitting requests for payment for Story County residents. As everyone here knows, there is definitely a shortage of dental providers, specifically dental providers that take state insurance and specifically providers that take patients without insurance here in Story County. And so of course, that, that patient population also has a number of other access barriers. So that really compounds the, the challenges that that, that population has. So we are grateful to have your support. We're grateful to be in the community and to be able to serve that population. Unfortunately, that need continues to grow. Our number of uninsured patients continues to increase. So in fiscal year 24, we saw a, about a 41% increase in the number of uninsured patients as compared to fiscal year 23. There's a couple of different reasons for that. And first I would say it's kind of what we've seen across the board with us as an organization. And I think what all healthcare providers have experienced in the last couple of years is the public health emergency ending, Medicaid redeterminations happening. And so there's been essentially this Medicaid unwinding that's happened. And so across our organization, we've seen a several percentage shift from Medicaid to uninsured. It's a little bit more pronounced here in Ames. And I believe the other reason for that is just because we've seen that increased capacity to serve patients. So more of the patients that we've served have been uninsured patients just due to that. We, we have a little bit more capacity to see patients, but we're reaching essentially the, the maximum of our capacity. The only way to serve more patients currently is if we would do a physical expansion of our facility and add more operatories. But essentially, we've, we've reached the max of what we can see with the amount of physical space that we have. Our dental team is comprised of two general dentists, two dental hygienists, one expanded function dental assistant, and then three, two other registered dental assistants. I'll share a couple of stories, but Dr. Postler may have others that she wants to share or may be able to speak to these better. So recently, we had a patient that was in need of a hip replacement and had a dental treatment that needed to be done before going in for surgery. Our dental assistants kept that patient on the waitlist and informed them that they would call if there were any openings in the schedule for them to be seen timely so that they could get that surgery done as soon as possible. So that team, just because they, you know, recognized the need and wanted to serve that patient, got that patient in quickly, were able to work that patient in with little delay. And so thanks to the diligence and compassion of that dental assisting team specifically, the patient was able to get in, have their treatment completed and ensure that she was ready for her upcoming hip replacement surgery. The second story I have is that a teen came in recently for pain originating from one of their molars. That patient was referred to the University of Iowa to complete a molar root canal, which is, as Dr. Postler can attest, far better than I. It's a complex procedure. That patient's mother shared that they were able to get to their, to their appointment in Iowa City, were not able to get to their appointment in Iowa City due to transportation barriers and of course, other barriers. And so Dr. Postler agreed to complete that procedure and it was, it was a success. And so if it wasn't for Dr. Postler and that team in Ames, that team would still be suffering with, you know, this terrible tooth pain. So that's just a couple of examples. And there's a myriad of other examples of how that team goes above and beyond just to ensure that those patients have their needs met, that barriers are not barriers and we're able to get them into, to be seen. And, and that doesn't preclude them from getting the care that they need. So a huge thanks to, to that amazing team. And then from a, we're also American Rescue Plan Act recipients through the county. And so a fair amount of that funding was dedicated to dental specific activities, but we've also included medical in that grant request. And so we've drawn down about 95% of those grant funds now, grant funds down now. We anticipate, we know we will spend down the remaining funds buyer before the deadline. But just the things that we funded with that, this grant period, so fiscal year 25 through fiscal year 20, fiscal year 24 through fiscal year 25 year to date. We paid for dental patient navigator salary and fringe. We have purchased IT equipment for the Ames Clinic. We've purchased patient marketing and education materials, both for dental and for medical. And then we've purchased a couple, several dentist chairs and dental assisting chairs. And those are ergonomic chairs for those roles specifically. Dr. Postler, is there anything that you would share that I've, that I've missed?
No, I think you covered it well. I just would, would echo that we are really appreciative of your support. There's so much need for dental services in our community and the surrounding communities. So we're doing the best we can to, to help everybody, but also make sure that the quality of care that we're providing is, is at a high level. So just appreciate all of, all the support you've granted us.
Thank you. I'll open up to questions. I do have one question and then I'll let my colleagues take over. There is conversation both at the state and federal level that would cut Medicaid, put in work requirements that, that may impact some folks to meet the, the criteria for the amount of hours that has to be done. Are you preparing for potential increase of more individuals of being uninsured? And kind of how are you preparing for that?
Yes, unfortunately, we're absolutely preparing for that. And so as one of 14 community health centers within this state, our Iowa Primary Care Association is incredibly supportive in working with the state and being liaison between the state and the health centers and understanding how we individually need to respond to that. So they providing, they have been providing support in that area. We are anticipating having a higher number of uninsured patients or patients shifting from Medicaid to an uninsured status. So we have prepared for that in, in essentially one main way. So we have just been navigating some difficult financial waters for a couple of years now. And with all of the, the current challenges we're experiencing from, at the federal level and then of course, anticipating further challenges at that level as well as the state. We have engaged a consulting firm to come in and analyze our operations and help us prepare a, a plan to both meet our, meet or improve our current financial situation and be prepared for changes in the, in the environment. And so unfortunately, we had to execute a reduction in force a couple of weeks ago. And so we've, we've done that to reduce our expenses while maintaining the same level of productivity and revenue generation. And so there's a number of other steps that come along with that in terms of improving our efficiencies, centralizing some of our services, not compromising any of the services we have, but just doing those things more efficiently so that we're better prepared to meet, again, our current situation, but also be prepared for the future. So that's, that's the main way in which we're preparing to address that. And then we have a team of health benefit specialists that do a lot of work with insurance enrollment and counseling with individuals that come in that are not currently insured or really need to be assessed on a, on a routine basis to see if their situation has changed. And so we'll definitely be leaning more into that, that group of folks to do a little bit more work with that population and ensure that we're, we're possible, being more proactive and reaching out to that, that Medicaid population that's not affected by work requirements or federal cuts and bringing in more of those traditional Medicaid patients that are able to retain their insurance. And so I anticipate that we'll have the capacity to add in some of those patients. So my hope is that we'll replace some of the patients that have shifted from Medicaid to, to a lack of insurance with some more traditional Medicaid population. But it is certainly a challenge that we are anticipating and we'll, we'll be as ready as we possibly can for. I don't know that anybody is fully ready to, to beat that head on.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. This is Latifah. So I know there was some conversation around whether PHC was going to have homeless liaison. Is that still in the works? Or is that a position that's still in Des Moines with, you know, no plans for a permanent person in this area?
So we have a, a team of folks that, that kind of shares coverage between Story and Marshall Counties. And so we have a grant that we received from SAMSA. It's called the, the Grant for Betterment of Homeless, Homeless Individuals. And so there's a couple of folks that office out of the Story County Clinic and then also provide coverage to the Marshalltown Clinic or Marshalltown Community as well. And so they're not there a full 1.0 FTE, but they're there for a portion of their FTE. I don't know what that is off, off the top of my head, but that is part of the work that they do, engaging with a specific population of homeless individuals.
Just making sure they weren't part of the reduction.
No, no, they're not. They're 100% grant funded.
Great. And then are you, is the clinic still providing mat services?
They are. That, so Dr. Swinton is our physician in Ames Clinic that provides the majority of the mat services. And then he partners with one of our nurses, Teresa Fisher, up there to, to help assist with that.
Great. Thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for all the good work you're doing.
Thank you. We appreciate it as always.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on. We've got the United Way of Story County's American Rescue Plan Act Annual Report. Good morning, Ashley.
Good morning. Good morning, supervisors. I have with me Sarah Mansel, who just yesterday was promoted to our Community Impact Director. So she steps in for Annika Middell, her predecessor, who will be leaving the Story County community and moving to Canada. But very happy to have Sarah. She's been with us for about a year. So we're here to give you a report on our ARPA 16 and 17 programs and projects. So Sarah is going to start off with ARPA 16.
Good morning, supervisor.
Yep. Turn that on.
Good morning. I'm here to talk about ARPA 16, which is focused on providing support to our childcare workforce in the community. We continue to partner with the same four nonprofit childcare partners, three in Ames, one in Maxwell, and providing them with recruitment, hiring, and retention bonuses for their employees. So far, we've spent approximately 65% of the funding that's available through ARPA, and it's projected to last through the summer of 2026. We are very confident that we'll be able to spend it all before the December 26 deadline. Some notable outcomes from the first three quarters of the fiscal year. There have been 155 new childcare workers hired, which is an increase from 135 workers during the same time period last year. 33 new childcare slots have opened up across the four sites, and an average of 429 children were enrolled during each of the last three quarters. I see you all taking notes, so I'm really practicing slower speech. Our partners have provided 44 different training or outreach activities in those three quarters. These include everything from traditional online and print job postings in addition to in-person events through ISU and other partners to provide career fairs. We have ongoing recruitment through advertising at Ames Fitness Center, and they continue to provide opportunities for their own staff to obtain their professional development. In addition to the monetary portion, we are also continuing to convene the Childcare Coalition. This group has really been revitalized in the last 12 months and continues to meet monthly. We have regular attendance by childcare providers, representatives from ECI, the Alliance. We've increased our engagement with various departments at Iowa State University. We've added a Story City employer and CCRR representatives to those meetings. Last summer, the group conducted a family survey, and we were able to collect input from 163 families across the county regarding their current and desired childcare arrangements, the barriers they face, and the solutions that they would like to see. In November, staff from United Way and a couple of the provider partners attended the Iowa Women's Foundation's Iowa Solutions Summit in the area of childcare, which included getting to hear from seven different solutions fund pilot sites across the state, which was a really exciting development. Our group continues to seek alternative funding, including the possibility of a public-private partnership to establish a childcare solutions fund as well as a grant opportunity this summer through the Iowa Women's Foundation, as I mentioned earlier. We've had great feedback from both the centers and the families who enroll their children. One of the centers said September, with the return of ISU students, we currently employ 25 students as assistant teachers. It is the first time since the COVID pandemic that we have been back to our normal numbers. So that's really gratifying to hear. Our assistant teachers allow us to staff our classrooms well over the required ratios to help ensure things run smoothly all day. In addition, you may have heard that the Eagles Loft Childcare Center closed. And when that news broke, one of our partners was able to really coalesce quickly. They were able to hire three of the outgoing staff from Eagles Loft and enroll several of those families to provide uninterrupted care. Some of the family feedback that the centers have provided include comments like, "We appreciate you because it's like a family here." And another family commented, "They like coming because they feel the staff care so strongly about their own children." Our key takeaways for you are that these ARPA funds have provided multiple benefits over the last couple of years to our local workforce. Not only is it direct monetary payment to those childcare workers, but in addition, we're helping keep options available for workers across the community to join the workforce or stay in the workforce with these increased costs. We know our families are facing challenges. The cost of living is going up, housing costs, food security. Being able to stay employed and have their children safely cared for is a priority for all of us. And we look forward to ongoing work with the cooperation of all facets of our community, including public and private partnerships, working with individuals, families, and businesses.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. Do you, uh, do you have any questions about ARPA 16 before we move on?
I don't have any questions, but I know I, I sit on the boost board. And in those meetings and other conversations, when Eagles Loft was closing and closed, I heard from many places that the, the Childcare Coalition was so important at that moment for both providing options for the employees and, and the families that, that were losing care. So it was really great to kind of be on the other side of those conversations, listening. So thank you. It's a lot of work.
You're welcome. Just a shout out to Sarah, who's been with us here. She really jumped in last May and took on our Childcare Coalition and has really helped to grow that, to bring in new partners and to help us think about sustainability and our plan for the future. So thank you to Sarah for that. An update on ARPA 17, which is around emergency food and 211. So first with 211 and our resource referral hub. So thanks to ARPA funding, our dollars support the 211 Resource Referral Hub. We have distributed over 5,000, 5,064, to be exact, print materials throughout Story County in the first three quarters of FY '25. The outreach is proving effective. So so far in FY '25, the 211 Call Center has received 815 referral requests from Story County residents. We've added five new service entries to the database and a, and a couple of things, both in Ames and outside of Story County. So the highest volume of referral requests continue to come from Ames with notable numbers from Nevada and Story City. So 211 receives 695 calls, texts, and emails from Story County residents with 118 or roughly 17% coming from outside of Ames. So really looking at close to one in five who are seeking referrals through 211 are coming from outside of the Ames community. Housing consistently remains the top need identified by callers across all three quarters. That should be of no surprise to this group or our community as we continue to be challenged with affordable housing options in a system both in Ames and outside, in the broader Story County. Last year, food was consistently the second most significant need identified through 211 referral calls, but we've seen a drop in that. And that's actually dropped out of the top three recently due to successful marketing of the wide availability of food and meal resources in Story County. We've talked quite a bit about the 20-plus food pantries that we have throughout the county. So that's been incredibly beneficial, I think, for our community. Specific to marketing, so United Way, every year, we host our Day of Caring. And our Day of Caring in September 24, 2024, we had 10 volunteers from Mary Greeley Medical Center in Ames who packed and delivered 62 full 211 kits. So these were bags with an assortment of materials and an order form to order additional 211 materials if needed, and an additional six mini kits of 211 materials. They deliver these to a variety of locations that serve individuals who may be seeking referrals and/or emergency assistance. So this includes our police stations, post office, community center and gyms, clinics, grocery stores, gas stations, you name it. So they really helped us out and, and spread the word in some of our non, nonprofit areas across the county. Ongoing marketing activities include an ad on the tail of the Cy Ride Bus. I just followed one on my way to work this morning. And our online order form and reordering of materials, which we have nonprofit organizations utilizing on a regular basis. Some great news, we have an intern hired for the summer. She starts later this month. We have some of our 211 contractor dollars left. So she's going to help us with tabling events, meeting with nonprofit agencies, and really making sure those 211 materials are getting, continuing to be in the community. So we're excited to welcome her this summer. Specific to our emergency food programs, we provided ARPA grant funding to seven Story County emergency food programs in FY '25. Those include food pantries, a meal site, and a provider of emergency food vouchers. We have an anticipated invoice from the Food Bank of Iowa for just a little under $1,500 to wrap up the backpack program that we've been supporting for the last several years. And we have two grants for partners, Micah and the Salvation Army, for $7,000 each to wrap up food pantry funding as well. So we've spent down those dollars well in advance of, of the end of FY '26. Together, these emergency food programs have distributed 144,916 pounds of food through quarter three. To give you an idea of what that is, we just wrapped up our own Live United Food Drive, and that was around 18,000 pounds. And that was a significant delivery last Friday to food pantry. So if you think about 144,000 pounds, it's absolutely incredible what we've been able to do to support our emergency food and food pantry partners across the county. what we've been able to do to support our emergency food and food pantry partners across the county. The impact is also clear. Ninety-eight percent of surveyed individuals, so that would be five hundred and fifty-three out of five hundred and sixty-seven, reported a positive impact from these emergency food services. As with previous years, individuals come from every zip code in Story County and represent all age groups from children to seniors. A couple of testimonials that we selected, although there are many. One recipient shared, "As a single mom with a disabled child, I am grateful for the food pantry's help in the past many years. I know that I have something to feed us whenever in need. A ton of thanks to you." Another noted, "We are very thankful for the ladies at the food pantry who work so hard in the cold." And a third recipient expressed, "I always appreciate the help when I use it as a last resort. Thank you for all you do." So our key takeaways from ARPA seventeen are these funds continue to provide critical support across our entire county, reaching residents from every community. The need for the services remains high with housing and food security being persistent challenges for many Story County residents. Again, unfortunately not something any of us are unfamiliar with at this point. And both two-on-one and the emergency food programs demonstrate measurable positive impacts for our most vulnerable community members. So on behalf of United Way and our partners, thank you for your continued support through ARPA.
Thank you. Questions? Do you have brochures for the two-on-one program?
We do. We did not bring any with us today, but we have a plentiful supply at our offices, so.
Because I see Greg here and so I'm not sure what his schedule is, but I'm just thinking since you work right down the block and we have the SE, Story County Economic Development Group that meets Thursday morning. That might be a good to get a bunch of brochures and that we could just pass it out to the clerks for all the county areas.
Great. We'd be happy.
So I could have done that, but I just thought you were right down the road, right down the street, Greg.
A sign. Go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, when that stash runs out, you can use our online order form and our staff will deliver it to the office.
As far as two-on-one and getting, making sure that it's updated, making sure the information is current and new. I know you said there were some new organizations added. That's no longer happening here, right? That's happening at a statewide location now? Yes, that's correct. So United Way of the Midlands really runs the two-on-one center. However, with our United Way of Story County Partner Agency agreements, that in order to receive asset funding from us, we do ask all of our partner agencies to update those twice a year. Part of our work with our Community Impact Team and then our summer intern will be just making sure that those continue to be updated, so that will be part of. Her role and responsibility is double checking and working directly with those nonprofit agencies to make sure they're updated because services do change and where they're provided, how they're provided hours. So it's a good way for us to make sure that that data is updated.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, we've got consideration of minutes.
I would move approval of minutes as presented.
Second.
Then moved and seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Consideration of personnel actions?
I would move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second. Then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Consent agenda. I don't know if anyone's pulling anything. I haven't heard anything. If not, I'd take a motion.
I would move approval of consent.
Second.
Then move and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. We have no public hearing items. Looks like we're down to discussion and consideration of the revised cellphone policy.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
So last week at the board meeting, the board approved the draft to be sent out for seven-day review. We received two comments. I don't know if the board received any comments or not.
I didn't.
No?
I just remember seeing one, but.
Okay. So I'll just review the two comments we have and we can have a discussion if there's anything in the policy you want to change. So there was one comment about the verbiage where it says employees receive this benefit must be available via the cellular phone as directed, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. They had a concern that means they're on call all the time. I think the verbiage in the policy as directed is sufficient. It's they're not on call, they're on a rotation or whatever within their department. So I think they just wanted to make sure that just because they get a stipend doesn't mean they they're on call or have to be. That was the concern and that is not, and that's not how it's been handled over the, gosh.
No.
Fifteen, seventeen years that we've had the policy. So the other comment was with the equipment stipend. They do feel that there is some value with the stipend. We removed the stipend from the policy when we revised it, but that they felt like the wear and tear on their personal cellphone if they use it for, in the field for work, if they'd have to replace it because of that, that the fifty dollars every two years is beneficial. There are a couple of things with that. If personal cellphones are getting damaged in the field, I think the department may want to look at providing a county-owned cellphone. That's an option. But I did want to bring that forward, that this employee had utilized the stipend in the past and felt like it was well worth because their cellphone did sustain some damage working out in the field. So I don't know. If you want to add anything, you got those same comments too.
I got the same comment.
I just summarized it. I didn't read.
And the stipend is, the stipend though was given regardless of whether any damage was sustained or not.
Yeah, it was just every two years.
Right.
Yeah. If they purchase a new phone, they do, you know, they aren't property of the county. I mean, it is employees purchase the phone. They have the upkeep on the equipment. So that's just.
And I can honestly say that the stipend in general is not used consistently throughout all departments and all people.
I think previously you used to purchase your phones outright too, and that might have been the reason for part of the stipend. I'm trying, I don't know when, I think twenty-twelve was the original.
When we put the stipend on, yeah.
Two thousand and nine was the original adopted cellphone policy and I don't.
But in twelve.
A lot has changed.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure and I don't know if your comments were different than the two. You said you had one comment or if it was.
No, I just had one question as I was just looking at this. I'm trying to recall when you had this before us last week on there and you have that personal cellphones and then it has that reimbursements will be at a dollar per use.
That would be a lot of times they use it if.
So like, you know, I'm going to use me as an example. I don't get an allowance. I don't have a county provided cellphone. If I felt like I was using election time, I had to make a lot of phone calls with my cellphone. We implemented this a long time ago and as opposed to getting a stipend or a phone, you get a dollar per phone call when you use your phone for work. It's, nobody uses it except elections as far as I know, and that's very rare even because all of us have unlimited now.
Gotcha. And I think previously there, people would run out of, I don't know, if they had so many minutes or whatever, so then they would get and it just kind of covered that.
Gotcha. Okay.
Covered that additional cost to their cell.
I mean, I consider it a third option as far as.
Sure, sure.
But I don't see, I don't remember the last time I saw one of those claims for a dollar, a phone call come across my desk.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions. Anyone else have any other questions?
No. I would move approval of the revised cellphone policy.
Second.
Then moved and seconded.
Can you make it effective June first? Just have the.
Effective June first.
I just want that in there. Second.
Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration for Microsoft Teams phone licensing and engineering services from Heartland Business Systems for twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty cents.
Good morning, Board.
Morning. Good morning.
What we have before you today, I've talked about this a little bit in some quarterly updates, but what we have before you today is to move forward with implementation of a Microsoft Teams phone system here at the county. So what this would entail is we'd work with Heartland Business Systems to look at our current phone system, work with all of our departments, work with IT to find out how we're using the current phone system, what we like, what we don't like. And then as we engineer this new system, that it would be built exactly how we want it and then train us as well in IT how to manage that system. So that is the ten thousand dollar, ten thousand three hundred fifty-three dollar quote would be for, actually, no, I'm sorry, that's for the sixteen thousand dollar quote would be for that process. One benefit to this system will be with our current Orion phone system. There's very little changes that we can do internally. A lot of it we have to ask Orion to do and then we're kind of at the mercy of them for turnaround and how the system works, we're pretty limited. A good example would be during the building shutdown, we had a lot of things come up kind of last minute that, oh, I'd like to add a voicemail to our number or things like that. You know, we try and prepare as much as we can, but there's some things that just get left to last minute and that's okay. But we were kind of tied, our hands were kind of tied on some of those requests on getting them turned on and then turned off. So this will gain us a lot of, a lot of flexibility to manage the system ourselves. It's also going to gain us a lot of capability over our current phone system. So our current phone system through Orion, there's multiple tiers based on what features you want. So most county users are kind of on the lowest tier that you get a phone and you get voicemail and that's it. There's a higher tier that I think all of us in IT have and there may be a couple of other departments have that gives you a mobile app that you can have on your cellphone and then make calls as if it was from your extension without having to give your cellphone number out. But that's kind of really expensive on a per-user basis and the process is kind of clunky. So with this new phone system, everybody gets all of the features for the same price. So regardless if folks need that app on their cellphone to make calls as a county number, receive calls on their county number, it doesn't matter. We get that. Another feature gain would be the ability to do text messaging from a county number that's archived and protected and stored for Freedom of Information Act requests. That's one thing that when I started and did my departmental meetings, I had from a couple of departments, they've said, you know, it'd be nice if we could interact with public with text messages for questions and things. And there's solutions out there that'll do it, but they're kind of independent from our phone system and there's kind of pros and cons to all of that, whereas now we'll have a system right built into our county phone system to be able to do that at no additional cost to us. So feature-wise, I think we're going to get a lot of gain out of this new system. I think we're doing it right by having Heartland come work with us that, you know, we can administer a phone system, okay, but making sure that it's what each department needs and wants out of their phone system. I think it's going to be great to have them come help design that with us. We did save, I say save, I guess loosely. The full cost for the engineering services was about thirty thousand, but we had, because of the work that we did internally on our Microsoft three sixty-five project, we had hours left over that we had paid for. So they were able to turn around and roll those extra hours that we had paid for already to this project and save us on some implementation here that we could use for that. So that's one part. The other part I'll talk about is the licensing, which is the ten thousand three hundred fifty-three dollar quote. So this is what our, our kind of monthly and annual cost would be. It is unbudgeted this year. We did put it in our budget request for next year and moving forward and that was accepted. Since we were under budget quite a bit on several other projects, we had the funding right now. So we thought, well, while we've got the funding right now, let's go ahead and get the project started. With this, we will realize an annual savings of about thirty-five thousand dollars moving to this Teams phone system over what we currently have. So not only are we going to gain a bunch of features and I think flexibility that the staff will really appreciate, we're going to save a pretty good chunk of money as well. Right now, our plan is to, is to use the current phones that we have, that we've already purchased. They've still got some life to them. We'd like to utilize those as much as possible. What we aren't a hundred percent sure right now though is they'll work as normal to place and receive calls and basically how everything operates now, that won't change. But there's some extra features that we can get if we did purchase a Teams phone. It's a little bit more of a smart desk phone. I don't have a quote in front of you today for that. They weren't able to turn that around for me. But that is something that we may come to you here in the coming months just to say, hey, you know, we'd like to replace some of our phones with this. One of my reasons for wanting to wait is I'd like to offer staff, once we get this system in place and staff feel more comfortable using it, I'd like to give staff the opportunity that with this new phone system, you know, we can, you can have the app on your cellphone and make calls as if it was your desk phone and receive calls as if it was your desk phone. You can also have a headset hooked up to your computer, which, so I implemented a system very similar to this when I was at the school and we had a lot of our, a lot of our staff that were, you know, administrative assistants or folks that were in front of a computer. They actually preferred having a headset to do it through the computer because then, you know, you want to transfer it to an extension. You just type the name and hit go. It's not looking up an extension number. And so we may have staff that want to go to that direction. So what I'd like to do is kind of hold tight with what we have right now. When people get used to the features and what it can do, then we'll put a survey out and say, hey, do you want to stick with a desk phone? Would you like to look at a handset or a headset or what would you like to give folks a little bit of an opportunity to pick some equipment that would fit? Fit what their needs are, then we'll get some extras too for new staff as they come and go or needs change. But that request could be forthcoming here in the next couple of months. But I think with the, you know, with the cost savings, that's a pretty huge, that'll easily pay for it within a year and then it's savings after that. So. Any questions?
So you're saying the headset, I get this would be future-wise or whatever. Would you need the Smart, Team Smartphone to use that?
No. So that works right with your computer. So I've got a pair of Apple AirPods that I've got on my computer if I'm on a Zoom meeting or something. And anybody's, you know, anybody could bring in a headset that they've got that they prefer. You just connect them up to your computer. You've got the Teams app up on your computer. There's a little phone dial pad that when the phone rings, your computer will make a little chime noise or you can make the call through your computer and you can just use the headset that way. So you can do that independent of meeting the desk phone. Yep. Yep. So that way it's not necessarily needing two pieces of equipment. Or if somebody wants both, you know, we could stick with the current phone since they work just fine. We can stick with that device and then add the headset on top of it to kind of keep both capabilities there. You know, you brought up Lisa this morning, your issue with voicemail. So this new process will be really, really easy with this new system to change your outgoing messages and set schedules on those sort of things and office hours. And it's, you'll just bring up a webpage on your computer and you can set all of that stuff on your own and it'll be very nice.
I know the possibility of having text message capability would help a lot of people. I know in my former role with the county, if we had people asking all the time.
Yep.
So with this though, the text messages, they get held just like emails?
Yep. They're archived just like emails. So if they're over a court case or a Freedom of Information Act request, we could produce those.
Great.
It was one thing that, that with my wife as the secretary at the high school here, she wouldn't be able to get ahold of parents, but then she'd use the system to text them and all of a sudden we get a response. It's just, there's a lot of folks that for whatever reason, right, wrong or indifferent, they wouldn't respond to email. They wouldn't respond to a phone call, but a text message they would. So I think this is an opportunity that for no extra cost, we're going to gain and it's through a county number, so it's not, we're not having to give out a personal number to do these things. So.
That's great.
It'll be a really good thing.
Any other questions?
Good work.
Yeah. If not, I'd take a motion.
I would move approval.
Second. Then moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye.
Thank you.
Next. Next is discussion and consideration and sponsorship for the Juneteenth celebration. I believe Vanessa Latimer Baker emailed both Supervisor Basil and I, I think we were both on a joint email. I just.
Oh, I don't think I was on that email.
I thought I saw your name, but whatever.
Sorry, sorry.
But whatever, I just attached the request and the sponsorship levels if we want to do that again this year. And I know we don't recall what we did in the past, but I just know they like to know ahead of time about the event in June.
Oh, you did a thousand.
You did a thousand. Thank you. Thank you, Shelley. I was thinking that, but I wasn't 100% sure.
We're ready for a motion.
Sure.
If you don't have any questions. Okay, then I would move that we sponsor the Juneteenth celebration for Ames and Story County on June 14th in the amount of $1,000.
Second. Then moved in seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Edens. Aye. I will let Vanessa know and then I'll also make sure that Lisa Markley, that you have that connection as well to make sure they draw down those, those funds. Looking on, we have no departmental reports. Other reports, we have lessons from five years of water monitoring in Story County. And we've got Sarah Carmichael, Story County Watershed Coordinator and Dan Haug from Prairie Rivers of Iowa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I am just going to give a brief introduction to our water monitoring program. And then Dan is going to go into the data and we will keep it short and sweet.
And yeah, did I understand? Do you have another meeting to get to?
We do.
We have a little more time than I thought.
Okay.
But I, I have more, I had too many slides, so I'll, I will.
Feel free to, you know, look at them on your own time. But the history of the water monitoring program for the county, January 2016, the Department of Natural Resources got rid of their citizen science statewide Iowa water program. So the county wanted to not lose that data, but also continue to collect data. Next slide. All right. Yep. So we worked with a bunch of different partners, including Prairie Rivers, a lot of cities, Nevada, Ames, Huxley, Gilbert. And we kind of began this process for water quality monitoring. It started off as a staff project, but involved or evolved into getting volunteers on board. The goal was to test streams or creeks in all of our watersheds. That map just shows the outlines of all of our 32 watersheds that Story County touches. So again, Prairie Rivers of Iowa, Isaac Walton League was it, is where all of our data is stored on the Clean Water Hub. And then, oh, go back one, sorry. So we had in 2020, our kickoff year, and then 2021 was our first full year. And that's when I kind of came on board and took over our volunteer portion. So this is our 10-year monitoring plan. Again, Prairie Rivers wrote this plan and writes our annual reports. But the purpose, collect and analyze water sampling data, increase residents' knowledge, and of course, improve water quality. This, these, all of these dots are our focus areas. So we have grab samples, which are done monthly by Dan and another volunteer. And then the volunteers that I oversee twice a month, first and third weeks of the month, I want them to go out every, the same day, the same time to collect their, the data. And those dots show where we are throughout the county. We also do E. coli testing. The DNR requires from Memorial to Labor Day that we test Peterson Park and Hickory Grove Park. But we just did a huge restoration for McFarland Lake. So we're actually adding that on to the conservation. We'll be taking care of that cost because there is more access to water at McFarland. And then we also do monthly samples at the creek that flows through Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor. So anywhere that the public can access the water, we want to test specifically for E. coli. Nitrites are also on there for Whirl Creek. And then Dan will get more into this, but we're about to do our fourth report. But being able to take on all the volunteers, we've been able to double that. We've had droughts the past couple of years. That's definitely affected our aquatic life. E. coli levels are very high downstream of wastewater treatment plants and in low flow conditions. And nitrate, we see very, it's just a very high level throughout, throughout the watershed, especially in rural areas.
Okay, next slide. All right. So the program, volunteer program has really grown. We now have 44 people participating, testing 53 sites. And collectively they've filled out over 900 data sheets and entered them on the Isaac Walton League's Clean Water Hub. So a really impressive cooperative effort. Next slide. And the thing we've really, I think the numbers have sort of stabilized this year, but the consistency has really improved. So we have, a lot of volunteers are testing twice a month for most of the year. So really the quality of data has improved. And yeah, as Sarah mentioned, we have 15 sites that are monitored monthly and tested by a certified lab operated by the city of Ames. And they also have three sites on the South Skunk River, above and below the Ames wastewater treatment plant that have been tested going back 20 years. So a lot of data, I've been working to make sense of that. Next slide. This year was the first year where we were able to do some heads up, head to head comparisons between our, our lab testing and our volunteer results. And there were some big discrepancies with the nitrates. So we're going to be following up on that this year and figure out if that's an issue with the equipment or, or training. It does seem like they're not as, as accurate under cold, under, during cold weather. So that might be the issue. Next slide. Phosphorus was, was more comparable. Some of the other things that the volunteers test for, the lab doesn't. So yeah, we're going to be following up on that in the next year and try to get a better handle on what the issue is. Next slide. But what we can do with the volunteer data is, is have a better sense for what water quality issues are a problem in Story County. So the Isaac Walton League has a, you know, a good, fair, excellent sort of a ranking system. You know, most of the water samples that we collect are, you know, good to fair. But there were some that, you know, were in that poor range. And so the main issue seemed to be nitrate, which was especially bad last year. Dissolved oxygen, which was pretty bad last year, especially bad in 2023. So, you know, affecting fish and aquatic life and in our streams. And then, you know, muddy water, phosphate in the water, sometimes a concern. And we're really not seeing issues with, with road salt or pH that other parts of the country have been affected by. So it's helpful to know what's an issue, what's not. Next slide. And you know, what the, what the report will have is a lot of figures like this that shows which creeks have problems. You know, there are some creeks that have consistently low dissolved oxygen, some creeks that have consistently high dissolved oxygen, and some where it's sometimes good and once in a while it's, it's bad. So. So yeah, we're going to be, uh, next slide. So over the next year, we're going to be continuing to work on a quality assurance plan. It's not clear whether DNR EPA will use that, but it's helpful for us to have a, you know, standardized, like what are our procedures for making sure that this meets our needs? And we're going to be doing more regular, you know, reviews of the data so that we can follow up with volunteers if there's something unusual and then go out in the creek if that's what's really going on. And then, you know, I think starting next week, I'll be taking a bottle of test strips out with me so that I can, you know, test both methods on the same day. And so we'll get a better handle on, on that issue. So one of the big reasons why we do this is to evaluate the progress of efforts that the county and its partners have been doing to, you know, with saturated buffers and cover crops and wetlands. There are two big issues that we face in, you know, evaluating the effectiveness of, of the program. One is scale. So cover crops, for example, reduce nitrate and phosphorus by about a third, but only 7% of the farmland in, in Story County has cover crops. So, you know, we'd only expect a 2% reduction from that. You're not really going to see that in the creek. The second issue, uh, next slide, is that there are huge year to year trends in, in nitrate that have nothing to do with land management. And this year I actually got a, a figure from, you know, from test plots where they have a control plot and a plot with cover crops. And, you know, in any given year, you know, a, a field with cover crops will have lower nitrate than a field without. But, you know, that top line in that figure is the control plot. So, uh, and we see that in pretty much every creek in, in, uh, in northern and central Iowa of this, you know, long-term kind of cyclical pattern in nitrate. Next slide. So, you know, in situations where we have 20 years of nitrate data for the South Skunk River, there's the cyclical pattern. It was really high, really low at the last drought, really high after the drought, dropped really low in the most recent drought and now is, is coming up again. So how much of that trend is due to weather and how much is due to, you know, things that, that are, that we're doing and that farmers are doing? It's really hard to sort out and I pretty much, I've tried a lot of things. I've pretty much given up on it. But what we can do instead is where we have, you know, one watershed where farmers are doing a lot of cover crops and one watershed without, we can make comparisons in the same time period. And so it happened that we, Kyle Ament with, with Iowa DNR recently did a survey of, of two tributaries of the South Skunk River near Story City. One had about 7% cover crops in the watershed and the other had 1%. So, you know, really good comparison. Next slide. And we can see that, that Kegley Branch, the red line with more cover crops had a lot lower nitrate levels most, most of the time than Long Dead Creek with fewer cover crops. So I think that's a really promising approach to be able to evaluate our progress. Next slide. Yeah, our volunteer monitoring wasn't showing quite the same thing. So again, need to try to figure out how to improve the accuracy of that. Next slide. So yeah, in general, you know, monitoring trends at one site really can't tell us whether conservation efforts are working, but comparisons between sites can if we know the location of the conservation practices. And especially if we can get a critical mass rather than, you know, random acts of conservation is sometimes the, the term used. So, you know, I think that'll be sort of the focus moving forward, getting a better, you know, communication between where, where are the conservation efforts happening and where is the monitoring happening? And can we, can we use those in tandem?
Can you speak a little bit to that random acts of conservation? I like that. I want to hear more.
Sure. You know, so I think that the challenge is that, you know, you end up, since it's a voluntary approach, when we're talking about agricultural conservation, you end up putting in conservation projects wherever you can find volunteers. And I know we've tried to do some targeting before, like, oh, let's send out letters to landowners in this particular watershed. And often you don't get any response. So then you end up going back to whoever shows up to your field day. So I don't really have a, a solution for that, but I do know that i- it is really tricky to, to monitor progress. If, you know, if you have one practice over here and one over there and, you know, if you can get a critical mass in, in one area, then that makes it a lot easier to, to see changes.
Thank you.
Um, next slide. So then the other thing we monitor for E. coli, it has an effect on public health, you know, sort of proxy for, for poop in the water that might make people sick if they swallow some while they're at the beach. We do have waters in Story County that are consistently that meet those standards, so Peterson Park Beach. But Hickory Grove, despite a lot of efforts to improve, that lake still had four weeks this, this last summer where there was an advisory posted. And, you know, we, our monitoring program has, has gotten data from rivers where we didn't have it before. And we're seeing consistently high E. coli levels at a lot of our city and county parks. Next slide. And I think the assumption had been that all it's, you know, DNR is, is, is taking care of the, the wastewater side of things. So it's got to be livestock or wildlife. And we're seeing that's not always the case. Most communities in Story County now have a UV disinfection system that will, you know, as the final stage of the treatment process. But not everyone does. And it turns out that makes a big difference. There's a lot of bacteria that makes it through the treatment process. And so city of Nevada, they're in the process of building a new plant, but the old plant, we've been seeing extremely high E. coli levels. And this year we finally got some, some affluent monitoring data. Communities hadn't previously been required to test it. Now that we, we do, we're saying, oh man, that's, that's really bad. Next slide. So, you know, we test West Indian Creek where it enters Nevada. I've seen kids playing in that creek and fishing. Sometimes it's really high. Last month when we tested it, it met the standard. But then downstream of, of the sewage treatment plants at Janet Heritage Area, off the charts high. Now, there's not many people, there's not really access at that point. So I was curious, you know, is it a concern for people downstream in Maxwell? So this, this last month I tested in Maxwell, it exceeded the standard, but it wasn't as bad as I thought. So it's getting diluted quite a bit. And hopefully, uh, once that new sewage treatment plan is done, we'll have a success story to report. But it did kind of bring to our attention that hu- human waste can be a major source of the bacteria in, in our rivers and lakes. We just recently found a, a supplier for a relatively low cost DNA tracking method and ran one test last fall in Iowa Creek in Ames, and humans were the main source of bacteria. So we're going to be looking a lot more at, you know, old sanitary sewers, at septic systems, you know, and at the, the few sewage treatment plants that still don't have that final stage of the process. Next slide. Yeah. And we're going to be educating the public more about the risks. Since we do see, you know, most of our rivers exceed the standard, then, you know, can we, you know, how, how do we tell people about those risks? And, you know, there's a difference between some creeks are a little bit over and some creeks are way, way over. And so distinguishing between those, so this will be kind of our focus moving forward is.
Where did you test on Iowa?
Brookside Park.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions or any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. So E. coli isn't the only thing that can get in the water and make us sick or make our pets and stuff sick. Do you test for other things or is there a different program or organization that tests for those?
And E. coli is the thing that's monitored because it's kind of easy to spot. And so it's sort of a proxy for, you know, it, it tells you there's poop in the water, but you might get sick from Giardia or Campylophactor or some other thing. So.
Okay. But like the, there's like a red, not mold, but algae. Yeah, that is really dangerous. Yeah. So algae blooms, we definitely have those in Iowa. That's usually from high nitrate and phosphate levels. And so we do monitor for those. We test at the lab and for volunteer, they test, they test that. But yeah, I think that's the algae bloom would be from those.
So if there, if there are folks who are wanting to go spend time outside or, or whatnot, is what, what's the website or place that people can go to check and make sure it's, is it safe for my dog to swim? Is it safe for my kids to play?
So the volunteer data, which, you know, is, is used on our end, it would be Clean Water Hub. So anybody can access that data. I think for the laboratory.
Well, so the two, the two county swimming beaches, the Peterson Park Inn and Hickory Grove, those, the DNR has a beach monitoring website. So those do appear on that. So that's microcystin and E. coli weekly during, from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Prairie Rivers of Iowa, P R R C D dot org. We do post the, the results of our monthly lab testing on our website and we have a newsletter. But often, you know, with that, i- it's sometimes like, by the time you, we get the data back from the lab and posted, the rivers, you know, it's rained, it's, it's already changed. So I think that more just tells us like, chronically, do we have a problem or not a problem? With the, with the algae blooms, we saw an algae bloom in the Skunk River, I think for the first time in five years, just this, this spring. It was in that, when we had that freakishly warm weather in, in late February. And so the trees hadn't leafed out yet. And so you had, you know, phosphorus, you had warm weather and no shade. And so then, you know, it looked like St. Patrick's Day. But I think a lot of the time, you know, we might have a lot of nutrients in the stream, but there's enough shade that it's, you know, keeping the algae.
We've got the new wetland at Prairie Valley. Are you going to be thinking about testing above and below that or how would you do that?
Yep. We have a volunteer on board now. She's been trained and so she'll be, it's not completely full. There's about three more inches needed. So, but she is, we'll be testing that. And it, she'll be doing all the volunteer tests, the seven tests, but mainly looking at how the nitrates are impacted from the wetland.
Cause that's one of the major places I think we've got drainage going into Iowa.
Yes.
So that'll be good to see how that impacts above and below, and then see what Brookside looks like.
Yeah. We might think about doing E. coli, maybe there, um, testing there, but yeah. I think the biggest thing, the biggest message with water is even if there's not advisories, is just being careful in general. Don't swallow a bunch of water. You know, make sure your dog isn't drinking straight from the creek, just being aware.
We might want to schedule this, and I know that our WMAs that are meeting jointly now have seen some of Kyle's information. But it might be nice after we're done with our field day, Dan, if you'd be willing to come and talk to us again. Cause I, I don't think you've shown them this presentation.
No.
Yeah. And I, I think it fits directly into what we're doing right. Yeah, and I, I think it fits directly into what we're doing right now, where we're targeting for cover crops. So, it's super. Thank you again for keeping
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, moving on, any upcoming agenda items?
Um, I don't have any.
Okay. Uh, now's the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If you're in the public meeting room and would like to make public comment, excuse me, uh, please come forward. Or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we'll close public comment number two. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin, want to start us out?
Certainly, thank you. Um, meeting this afternoon in Ames, Bridge Home Update. Tomorrow morning, we have Joint Drainage District. I've got a staff meeting. Um, tomorrow evening, quarterly nine-one-one service board. Um, Thursday, I have a surpa meeting overlapping, it looks like, the Story County Economic Development Group. I'll figure out how I'm going to do those. And then in the afternoon, we have department heads and elected officials meeting. In the evening, asset and joint funders meeting. Friday morning, I have a meeting with the sheriff. Friday noon, uh, Ames Alliance Executive Committee meeting. And next Monday, conservation, excuse me, conservation recognition in the morning. Then a joint WMA meeting in Stanhope later in the morning, followed by MIPA executive in the afternoon. So, we're busy.
Supervisor Faisal?
Yeah, uh, same meetings this afternoon, um, and then uh Drainage District tomorrow morning. Um, I have a NACO Rural Action Committee meeting. And then there's the um, the launch for the Alliance branding tomorrow afternoon at four. Um, at least it's on my, yep. Um, and then Story County Economic Development Group meeting Thursday. Department head and elected officials and asset joint funders Friday. I have breakfast with Greg, um, that I I will remember this Friday, yes. Um, didn't get on my calendar last time, so I stood him up. I still feel very bad. Um, it looks like Monday morning we have conservation recognition. Um, and Housing Action Plan meeting. And then uh there's a Story County overdose awareness event planning event Monday evening that I'll be at too, so.
Okay, so I've got the same meetings this afternoon. Um, I also have an ARC Board of Directors meeting. Uh, Drainage District tomorrow. I have a uh workforce meeting at eleven-thirty tomorrow. Then I have a personal appointment, then I'll be back. I have the NACO um economic and workforce monthly meeting. Thursday morning, I have an Aging Resources meeting. And then I see where uh Story County Economic Development is going to now meet at uh the Alliance. Um, I might see if I can do my nine o'clock meeting at the Alliance so that I'm already there and not trying to be on the phone, just find a quiet little area or just sit in the parking lot and do that. Department, yeah. Uh, department head meeting and then the asset joint funders Friday morning. I have an early morning of the Central Iowa Workforce um CEO Board. Monday, I have both conservation and then a lunch meeting. Um, I'm just going to make the comment, I will know Monday night if I have to show up for jury duty Tuesday. I didn't have to this week, so I do have a full week next week, but that's going to be depending on what the courts tell me if I have to show up to or not. And if there is nothing else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Smooved.
Second. Moved in second, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddens, aye, we are adjourned.